Happy May Day, everybody. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for May 1st, 2023. City Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Deputy Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmember Zahn.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale, could you please lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have three proclamations tonight. We will read each one, take a picture, and then read the next one and take a picture. So the first one, Councilmember Lee, could you please read the Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month proclamation?
Thank you. Well, as an Asian American immigrant to this country, I'm very proud that I'm in a country where we have opportunity, we have freedom, and we seek for justice for all. So I'm honored to read this, the following proclamation. Whereas about 24 million Americans proudly identify themselves to be of Asian, South Asian, Native Hawaiian, and/or other Pacific Island heritage; and whereas Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islanders form an American community of some 25 major ethnic groups who speak more than 15 different languages and belong to a wide variety of religions and cultures; and whereas approximately 38% of Bellevue's population is comprised of AANHPIs and individuals of AANHPI heritage, among the largest percentages enjoyed by Washington cities, and several organizations host festivals and events in the city honoring the heritage of these communities; and whereas we acknowledge the institutional and systematic injustices that have historically impacted these communities, make it more difficult to be heard and seen, as well as the struggle to remain safe amid instances of hate and misinformation; and whereas Japanese immigrants played a key role in Bellevue's historical place as an agriculture center, and people from AANHPI backgrounds continue to enrich our region's culture through excellence in technology, the arts, and design; and whereas AANHPI entrepreneurs strengthen our economy and our communities through their dedication and ingenuity, inspiring the next generation of innovators by example; and whereas we strive to raise awareness of the history and contributions of AANHPI community through the city's AANHPI Heritage Month events, including an art exhibit featuring AANHPI artists from May 1 through 26, and a second exhibition from the Chinese American Civil Association called "Applaud to Chinese Transcontinental Railroad Workers" from May 15 through 26, both on display in the City Hall concourse. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the City Council, to hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Bellevue, and encourage all residents to celebrate the rich diversity of this community, to enjoy and appreciate their many contributions to our city, to reflect on the many challenges they have faced through history and in current times, and to join in looking forward to a future of hope, safety, and optimism. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Zahn, you too are a Chinese immigrant. Would you like to say something?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I think it's so special to be able to celebrate AANHPI Month because we know that we have been part of the U.S. history for many, many years. And so I'm really excited that we are making this proclamation. In fact, in many states, there is work to promote a program called Make Us Visible where we're actually able to teach API history in our schools to make sure that we're not just talking about the challenges that we've had as AANHPI, but also to celebrate the contributions as well. So thank you, Mayor.
Perfect. Do we have somebody to accept this proclamation?
We did have someone set, but I don't believe that there is anybody.
Why don't we do a picture with Councilmember Lee and Councilmember Zahn? Okay. Our next proclamation is for International Firefighters' Day proclamation. I'm going to ask Deputy Mayor to read that, and I see we have a lot of people here to accept, which we appreciate, and I'll introduce you when he's done.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas International Firefighters' Day is observed each year on May 4th to honor and remember past firefighters who have lost their lives while serving their communities and to express gratitude to those who have saved, sorry, who have served in this line of work and to show support and appreciation for those who presently serve. And whereas this commemoration was born out of a tragic loss of five firefighters on December 2nd, 1998, in a wildfire in Victoria, Australia. The resulting day of recognition was a way to honor their lives and the sacrifice firefighters are willing to make for the people they serve daily. And whereas the demands of firefighting are accompanied by both personal and physical tools that all firefighters knowingly accept while risking their lives to protect the lives of others. And whereas at a moment's notice, firefighters are quick to respond to uncertain situations to mitigate danger and combat the threat of destructive fire or medical emergencies to protect individuals, families, and economic well-being of our community. And whereas the Bellevue Fire Department has maintained continuous international accreditation from the Commission of Fire Accreditation International since 1998 and demonstrating the commitment of all Bellevue firefighters to operate at the highest standards. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its City Council, do hereby proclaim May 4th, 2023 as International Firefighters' Day and encourage all residents to show support and appreciation to our City of Bellevue Fire Department and firefighters who diligently protect lives and property and by remembering past firefighters who dedicated their lives to preserve our safety. Signed, Lynn Robinson, Mayor, City of Bellevue.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And we have accepting tonight Battalion 102 Chief Luke Steer. We have from Engine 101 Lieutenant Steve Cyrus, Engineer Nick Yankopol, firefighter Jessica Slider, and Aid 102 is here with firefighter DeAndre Goodwin and Juno Kim. Would you like to come up and accept this, please? Would you, would anybody like to speak to it? Okay, let's do that first. Go ahead and speak into the microphone so everybody can hear you, and then we'll do a picture.
Yeah, thank you. We're humbled to be here to represent all firefighters, but specifically Bellevue firefighters and those that have come before us, that made that sacrifice with their life. But we are very, very proud to serve the Bellevue community and the surrounding communities and humbly accept this recognition.
Great. We're very proud to have you. Okay, we got one more proclamation for public service recognition week. Councilmember Stokes, could you read that, please?
Oh, yes, Mayor. I really appreciate being asked to do this. I spent about over 10 years with the Department of Health, Education, and Welfare and HHS as regional attorney of five state regions, so I've been a public servant in that. And then when I came here, I worked the Office of Hearings and Appeals in Seattle for about the same number of time, 12 years. So I particularly appreciate and understand how much is asked of public servants and how much they give back. So I'll read the proclamation. Whereas people throughout the United States are assisted every day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, and whereas normally doing their jobs behind the scenes, these employees strive to perform their tasks with efficiency, excellence, and integrity. And whereas Bellevue's public servants, over 1,600 staff across 13 departments, are recognized as an invaluable resource, helping countless residents thrive on a daily basis across our increasingly diverse community; and whereas many public servants, including road and utilities crews, police officers, firefighters, healthcare professionals, and military personnel risk their lives daily doing their jobs; and whereas public service is a noble calling involving a variety of challenging and rewarding professions; and whereas we benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of the highly trained individuals who work in our government and especially appreciate those in Bellevue. Now therefore, I, on the behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 7th through 13th, 2023, as Public Service Recognition Week in Bellevue and urge all citizens to reflect on the contributions of public employees who carry out the missions of our various branches of government.
Great. Is there anybody here to accept this proclamation, City Clerk?
We do not have one.
Okay, so we'll leave it at that. He gets paid. Would you like to accept this award, Mr. Miyake? We would love to. Would you like to speak to this?
Sure. I think it's a great honor for anybody that, and I speak on behalf of all employees, that, you know, we are here to do a job and as public servants do for that purpose, to serve the public. And it's a great honor that, you know, there's a proclamation speaking to that this evening. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, let's do a picture. Okay. Okay, Deputy Mayor, I think you have an amendment to our agenda.
I do. I move to approve the agenda amended to add an executive session at the end of the meeting as Item 15A to discuss property acquisition of approximately 30 minutes.
Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This evening, there are eight pre-registered speakers. And so I will remind the public of the rules around oral communications. It is for a period of no more than 30 minutes. And each speaker will be given three minutes to make their comments. Only three speakers will be allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. And in addition, in compliance with Washington State Public Disclosure Laws, the use of public facilities during elections, that no election-related topics may be discussed during oral communications or other public participation points of the agenda. This includes discussion of ballot measures, endorsement of candidates or political parties, and speaking on behalf of a campaign, including your own campaign. Any speaker who begins discussing topics of this nature will be given a verbal warning as this is considered a disruption to the meeting and may be asked to be removed from council chambers. And with that, I'll call our first speaker on the list, who is Patrick Bannon. And Mr. Bannon is here in person.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, Councilmember, City Manager Miyake. My name is Patrick Bannon. I'm president and CEO of the Bellevue Downtown Association. I work across the street. I love coming to council meetings, so it's easy to do, and I gave my wife a heads up. So I checked the boxes tonight. And on this particular evening, I would like to speak in support and share my thanks for the Keep Bellevue Beautiful program and the Safe and Clean Initiative on tonight's agenda. I've had the privilege, and it really has been a privilege, of working in this community for over 17 years. And there have been issues that have come and gone. Some we've agreed to, and some, you know, there's debate. And I think there's one issue that continues to bring people together, unite the community, and that is a safe and clean neighborhood. And so it's not just a downtown issue, it really is a citywide issue. I've had, you know, again, the privilege to pick up trash and be a part of, hopefully, a solution. And I love seeing the formality around this program that has been born, not only of council initiative and perseverance and staff hard work, but also from our community, our residents. I know many residents have worked long and hard to bring this type of initiative forward. And so I look forward to continuing to agree on this one issue, well, many issues too, but particularly on this issue of contributing to a safe, vibrant, healthy, and litter-free Bellevue. And we stand ready to partner with the city on any and all opportunities in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Jody Alburns, who is joining us virtually this evening. Ms. Alburns, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can. Your time begins now.
Okay, great. Good evening, Councilmember Robinson and City Council, on behalf of the Bellevue Chamber. Thank you so much for the opportunity to provide comment this evening in support of the Keep Bellevue Beautiful program as well. As someone who interfaces with businesses and individuals looking to make Bellevue their home, I hear a few consistent themes that attract them here: welcoming, clean, and safe. And these characteristics are what make Bellevue really stand out and allow it to continue to be an epicenter for economic growth and individual opportunity. And it's for this reason that such efforts to keep Bellevue litter-free are so important. And this Keep Bellevue Beautiful program provides an exciting opportunity to create community partnerships and conduct educational outreach on sustainability efforts as well. And this is all while ensuring Bellevue stays a desirable place to live, play, and work, and creating a greater sense of purpose among the Eastside community as we all work together to work toward that common goal of keeping our community. It's really a welcoming place to all that come here. And so as an aside, our chamber CEO, Joe Fain, is offering to use his Fridays this summer to pull shopping cart cleanup duty. He may or may not be aware that I'm offering this, but we'll just sign him up, and he won't be the wiser. But in all seriousness, Bellevue Chamber really looks forward to being a close partner in this program and thanks city staff and council for their dedication to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Shui Chao Sun.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Shui Chao Sun. You guys can call me Joe. We are the owner of the, kind of like, new business, a dance studio. We're trying to, kind of like, you know, settle in the Bellevue City, in the Lake Hill Plaza. And we are facing an issue is like, when we try to submit our permit for our construction, and then like, the city actually can't like, give us like, transportation impact fee. The amount of like, the transportation impact fee is kind of like, huge, and it's like, a huge burden on our, kind of like, business. And then we are actually kind of like, try to negotiate with the landlord like, last two months, while like, during the time, we are actually paying a lot extra, extra. And then we are actually kind of like, just like, thinking about like, if the city can change the system, actually build the transportation impact fee to the landlord because it seems like the developed, like, you know, plan, like, the tenant and the parking ratio at the beginning. And as a new tenant, like, moving into the plaza, we are not aware of like, this thing like, at the beginning, and it's actually kind of like, really hurting our business at this point. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, the next speaker is Shin Shin Li.
I'm sorry, we kind of like, double booked like, the same, but we are talking about the same thing.
That's okay. You can have three people speak to the same thing. So if Shin Shin wants to speak, that's okay.
No? Okay. Our next speaker is Shams Perbai.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Robinson and honorable City Council members. I was here last week, and my ask was that the TI permit that I've applied for got a traffic impact fee of $124,000 that's attached to it, that the city does not, regulations do not allow, they don't care who pays for it as long as that's paid. My, I got a call back from the city manager's office a couple hours ago, and they said, based on the current code, there is no way for differentiating who will pay for the fees. My ask was, last week was, which was motionless granted, was that the landlord should pay for the traffic impact fee because they are the ultimate beneficiary of renting the space. And my ask is very simple at this point. Can the city please issue my permit without me paying that traffic impact fee and that be billed to the landlord, the developer of the property?
Okay. So we've heard you, and we can't have a back and forth like this, but if you would like to have, I think you've been in conversation with our leadership team over here, and you can continue those conversations. But we have heard you. And so that's what public comment's for. It's not for a discussion, I'm afraid.
I see. So basically, is it possible for the city to do that, or not?
I can't answer that question, but I'll leave that up to our city managers, our deputy city managers.
I'm going to go ahead and have our deputy just meet with you right after this, so you can have a conversation.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Yes.
The next speaker on the list is Christian Dorset. Though I, Mr. Dorset, I do not see you participating online if you are under a different name. Can you please use the raise hand function? Also, I don't, you in the audience? All right. Moving on to the final speaker on the pre-registered list, and that's Heidi Dean. Looks like she is joining us virtually. Ms. Dean, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yep. Thank you. Your time begins now.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tomorrow is the opening day for the Newport Hills Woodlawn Park off-leash area. And while I was at the park last week, I received comments from visitors from Seattle, Renton, and Newcastle about how huge the off-leash area is. And my answer was, yes, I know. It was supposed to be a neighborhood park, and instead, it's become a regional off-leash dog park. The Parks Board said they didn't want to create an attractant, but I fear that's exactly what was created. A beautiful-looking attractant drawing in dog owners from many different cities. Yet, there's little room for Newport Hills residents to gather for a neighborhood picnic, which was something that we spent years looking forward to. While I was at the park last week, I noticed that a sign with rules for the off-leash area had finally been posted. But here's the problem. It's tiny, and it has tiny text, and it's posted below the waist level on the gate leading into the off-leash vestibule. And nobody's going to see it or read it. While the sign at Robinswood Off-leash Area is huge and posted at eye level so that you have to look at it as you enter the off-leash vestibule. So I don't understand why Robinswood got a huge sign and Newport Hills received a tiny, easy-to-miss sign, especially given that we know there's going to be problems with the off-leash users at Newport Hills. That's historic. So I respectfully request that you ask the city manager and Parks Department to correct the sign issue because there's vital information on those signs about expectations for behavior, for supervision of dogs, and for who to call in the event of incidents with dogs. Also, we're already having trouble with people letting their dogs off-leash back in the loop trail. And my neighbor on 56th Street here reports that she regularly encounters people on the trail who refuse to leash up their dogs, and that causes her own leashed dog to react. I also witnessed a couple exiting the loop trail with their two bulldogs off-leash. I'd asked for signs at both entrances to the loop trail indicating that dogs must be kept on leash. Parks did put a sign to that effect on the bottom of a post located near the lower trail entrance. But again, it's really easy to miss because the sign is tiny, it's low to the ground, and the post is kind of set off to the side. So there's no sign at the upper trail entrance, and that's where I saw the bulldog owners enter. So again, I'd like to ask that Parks correct the signage issue and do some emphasis patrols because I have a lot of neighbors who'd like to enjoy that trail without encountering off-leash dogs. And then finally, I'd just like to ask that Parks reach out to the group of dog owners who've been needing at Ringdall Middle School, and I do know that Parks knows how to reach them, to remind them of the park and off-leash rules, off-leash area rules, namely that they remain in the off-leash area supervising their dogs versus sitting up on the overlook bench or the picnic shelter. And I'd also ask Parks to remind these folks that this is public park property and that they shouldn't leave personal belongings such as chairs and other personal effects at the off-leash area as they did prior to park property development. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My apologies. We do have two additional speakers on the pre-registered list. And Joe Kunsler is the next in line. Mr. Kunsler, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. I can hear you loud and clear. Thank you for your continued public service. I want to thank you for that public service resolution. Our public servants do incredible work from administering meetings to fighting fires, to enforcing the law. And I signed in on intergovernmental affairs because a certain resident of yours, I'm asking for you to remind Alex Zimmerman that there's a $3,000 fine he has to pay the Public Disclosure Commission within the next month. And I know this is a little awkward, but some of us are trying to track him down, and we see him in the audience. So if you could handle that, that would be great. And the fine was issued just last Thursday. Thank you for your public service. And one last thing. I vehemently object to the words and phrases and racism that Mr. Zimmerman used in addressing you last week, and I hope you do as well. That was clearly out of line. Thank you for your public service.
Thank you. The final speaker on our list is Alex Zimmerman.
I always talk to everybody, idiot never call it. It's not my expression. I think this expression is staying from big evil of human nature. No problem. Zhehai, oh my dorri de vna cie, fascist, bandito, criminal, a kritina from animal farm. My name Alex Zimmerman, I want to speak today about two point. Point number one is about bicycle. You spend a million and million dollars for bicycle and how many bicycle in Bellevue? Probably couple dozen. For last 35 year, I see bike in Seattle Bellevue three times. 35 year, three times, little bit too much. I understand why you spend so million dollars. This very interesting for me. If you have like a 30 or 40,000 people but is cannot afford housing because right now statistic, I'm statistic couple days ago, Seattle King County in Bellevue, number one in prices for last 10 year. We are hero, we are best of the best. It's very important for me. So you spend something for what? For what? For couple dozen bicycle, bikes? Because they lobby, but they support Democrat for many year and I speak about this many time publicly. The number two, what is I want to explain to you, is this in agenda right now? Human Rights Commission, Human Service Commission. I go to this commission every month or twice per month, something every time, you know what it mean? And people come and complain to them. Complain. You know what it mean? Last meeting, 12 complaint. I complained too. Most is discriminatory complaint. I complained because I thinking Bellevue fair city in America when white people have a something strange situation, a Holocaust. Here not sit because it's minority right now. So I speak too. So I spoke to this idiot, 12 idiot, and they ask a simple question. When people come complain to you, why you don't give answer? Seattle have three similar committee. And I speak dozen time in each committee and have answer. Sometimes I don't have answer, but official complaint I have. And this not happen at Bellevue. In Bellevue, biggest city right now, in Seattle, in state Washington, for my understanding. And more intellectual and more rich. So this is very important. So two manager present in this meeting, Human Care Commission. So they told me go to director. I go to director, three weeks, almost months, no answer. I go to manager, no answer too. Guys, when you stop and acting like a degenerate idiot with Nazi fascist Gestapo principle. People may complain, give official answer. Somebody post to be give answer. When doesn't complain, most discriminatory come to this meeting and you very quiet for this for many year.
Mr. Zimmerman, your time has expired.
No, sorry, you're not Nazi, you freaking idiot.
That would bring us to the
Your time is up.
That brings us to the end of our pre-registered list. We do still have a few moments. If there's anyone joining us here in council chambers who would like to make a comment to the council, please raise your hand. Anyone joining us online, please do the same.
I see Pamela Johnston would like to speak. Oh, and you also, I called on Pamela first, actually. Go ahead, Pamela.
Hello? Is this one on?
It is.
Okay. Thank you, council members, for your First Amendment allowance. I find it very difficult, but I really appreciate the fact that you sit through this every week and deal with it as best we can. My daughter is in DC right now, so I'm feeling really tied into that kind of stuff right now. Going to see Madison and Jefferson's house and all that. But the thing that I came up here to really talk about is I wanted to thank the mayor for coming over to Pike's Peak and checking out our swivel back and, back S-curves that we have there. Some people in our neighborhood were worried about the trees dying off and causing the road to be unstable. And I just appreciate you coming out and checking that out. Thank you.
And Betsy Hummer.
And then Betsy, go ahead.
I'm Betsy Hummer. I live right next to Bellevue College. It's nice to, I haven't been here for quite a while, so it's nice to see you all. I am here to say thanks for doing the Keep Bellevue Beautiful initiative. I think that's really wonderful. I've been talking to a number of people about shopping carts for a long time. I followed Mr. Fantles' example on Keep Bellevue Green and Clean, and I've been reporting shopping carts. And I was thrilled to hear that we have a shopping cart retrieval plan that's actually working. And I would just like to show the My Bellevue app that I use on my phone. I push new request and you can't imagine my thrill when I pushed code violations and it says abandoned shopping cart. And I can put a map in there and a photo and a little smiley face. So thanks for keeping Bellevue beautiful. I just love that. You know, it also reminds me of Malcolm Gladwell's book way back when, The Tipping Point, where once we keep things clean, people are safe and we use our city the best we can. Everyone loves Bellevue because it is safe and beautiful and we all can live our best lives here. So thanks. Keep Bellevue beautiful.
Okay, I did not see any additional hands, so I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next up, I think we have the consent calendar.
I move to approve the consent calendar?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have three study session items tonight. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce the first one?
Yes, Mayor, thank you, Mayor. House members, the first topic is a recommendation from our Human Services Commission for $3 million of the $10 million ARPA dollars that were appropriated in the 2324 budget just recently. Tonight's presentation will provide the Human Services Commission recommendation on how that $3 million will be allocated towards critical human service needs. Following the presentation, staff will be seeking direction to prepare a resolution for a future meeting approving the Human Services Commission recommendation. So joining us this evening is Toni Asparza, Assistant Director of our Parks and Community Services Department. And to her right is Ted Mansfield, the Chair of our Human Services Commission. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Toni.
And good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council Members. Thank you for having us this evening. As the city manager mentioned, I'm here tonight with our Commission Chair Ted Mansfield. In addition, we have other human services staff and commissioners in our remote audience that have been a vital part of this process. We are seeking feedback to prepare a resolution, your direction on approximately $3 million based on the Human Services Commission's recommendations that we will be going over this evening. And again, in addition, at the end of our presentation, we'll briefly go over some information about an upcoming human services strategic planning process. To provide a little bit of background before we get started, throughout the pandemic, the council has shown a deep commitment to the community and responsiveness to the hardship residents have experienced and are continuing to experience from the pandemic. In total, the council has allocated over $21 million in one-time pandemic funding. This began right at the start of the pandemic with council allocating $450,000 from the council contingency and continued with allocations of multiple CDBG sources, multiple CARES rounds of dollars, and most recently, a total of $17 million in ARPA funding. Throughout this funding, the city of Bellevue has definitely lived into its values and we want to thank you for your tremendous support for our most vulnerable community members. And as you all know, most of the funding sources listed here, CDBG, CARES, ARPA, are federal dollars that then get allocated at the local level. And we want to take a moment to recognize the impact of these federal funds at the city level and thank our congressional delegation, Senators Murray and Cantwell, and Representatives Smith and Delbinay for passing these bills and for advocating for these resources. A little bit more background, most recently, in response to the need, the city council allocated $10 million of the second tranche of ARPA funding for human services. 2.4 million was allocated immediately for rental and mortgage assistance, and 7.6 million was then allocated into the 2324 budget adoption process. Of that 77.6 million, there were four different purposes. Just over 1.5 million was added to funding for our 24/7 enhanced shelters to make sure that those shelters receive their full ask from the city. Approximately 2.7 million was allocated for, again, additional funding for rental and mortgage assistance. And approximately 3 million that we'll be speaking to this evening was allocated to address other critical human services needs in the community. There was also a portion allocated for staffing, approximately $300,000. And as we discussed when we came to you in October, federal dollars come with very stringent reporting requirements that require significant staff time to make sure that we steward the dollars and support our agencies effectively. So before you this evening are eight areas that were identified as the most critical needs in the 2122 Human Services Needs Update and were verified with additional data that we collected throughout last year. The funding amounts for each of the critical need areas are based upon the amount of the unfunded requests that we received in the 2324 Human Services Fund Round. I want to talk with you a little bit about how staff-centered equity, and then I'm going to pass it over to our Chair, and he will also discuss how the commission-centered equity and went through the review of application processes. So you have prioritized making human services funding available to a wide spectrum of agencies in our community and to ensure that our diverse community members can access services from who they know to be trusted messengers. And so to advance that goal, staff took a number of steps. We first met with every agency that applied for funding prior to their application being submitted. In addition, we continued to meet with some agencies throughout their application process and throughout the application review process. This was especially supportive to agencies that were new to our funding process, that haven't previously received government funding, to make sure they knew what steps to take. In addition, staff streamlined the application process to try to remove barriers, and we received feedback from agencies right away that the application was much simpler to access. Next, I'm going to pass it over to Chair Mansfield to explain the vital role that the commission plays in ensuring an equitable funding process. Before I do that, staff want to express gratitude for the commitment of the commission to engaging in yet another funding review process. It required considerable time from our commissioners outside of meetings and inside of meetings. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Losing my voice a little bit, I started speaking this morning at 6:30, so go in and out, that's why. So prior to the funding review process, the city's diversity advantage team presented to the commission on cultivating a culture of equity for the commission's work by providing an understanding of diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging within the city of Bellevue context. This included an explanation that centering DEI leads to exceptional public services for all our residents and creates a culture where everyone in the city of Bellevue can realize their full potential. Staff have continued discussions each meeting with the commission on creating a culture of equity. Staff introduced the concepts of trauma-informed care and cultural humility. Trauma-informed care is first and foremost rooted in empathy and in humility. The commission was presented with data demonstrating there are disproportionate levels of need experienced by residents of certain zip codes and marginalized identities, including race. The zip code 98007 is both the most racially diverse zip code in Bellevue and is home to the highest percentage of households receiving basic services, basic food benefits or SNAP. Data shows that racism is part of the trauma that people of color carry with them. Locally, King County underscored this with its pronouncement that racism is a public health crisis. Finally, the commission made recommendations for funding to agencies currently contracted with the city, but also to new agencies and programs, including those who are considered trusted messengers by the community. I'll now briefly touch upon each category of funding. Civil legal aid. Civil legal aid includes free or low bono legal assistance for low and moderate income individuals with civil legal problems due to the pandemic or its economic impacts, including eviction. A new applicant, family law casa, dedicates up to 240 hours to ensure the safety of children caught up in each high-risk and high-conflict court custody case assigned to the agency by judges. Domestic violence and sexual assault survivor services. The applicants demonstrate that survivor needs are varied. They include housing stability, legal representation, employment services, immigration services, and counseling. Indian-American community services applied for a new program to provide culturally sensitive domestic violence services. Behavioral health services. Providers are offering many of their services where clients are at a school or in a shelter. International Community Health Services and the Bellevue Boys and Girls Club applied to provide behavioral health services embedded in schools. Childcare. Agencies providing financial assistance to families seeking affordable childcare are struggling with capacity issues. As a result, only one application was received for childcare. Boys and Girls Club of Bellevue is addressing losses due to isolation during the pandemic by focusing on the developmental well-being of children and youth using academic and social emotional learning strategies. Food insecurities. Agencies providing food assistance have been inundated with requests for assistance. Agencies responding to this need are doing so in a variety of ways. The commission is excited to recommend funding for a new organization, Eat Happy. It is addressing the need for food to get those who are hungry while working to reduce food waste in the community. Basic needs. Community members cannot use their SNAP benefits to purchase essential hygiene supplies and food banks are not able to get enough supplies donated to keep in stock. The commission recognizes the importance of meeting residents' basic needs as access to items such as feminine hygiene products, deodorant, and laundry detergent relates to social well-being, feeling confident, being susceptible to being bullied, and being able to show up to work in appropriate attire. As a result, the commission's recommendations focused on applicants that are distributing basic need supplies. Fostering well-being in the face of racial and ethnic discrimination. The city of Bellevue's historically funded agencies across the continuum, including those who provide culturally specific services. The recent Human Services Needs Update identified the impacts on resident well-being from racial and ethnic discrimination as an area of critical concern. This is the first time that a specific RFP has offered funding to address this need. Applicants are promoting the physical, mental, and emotional well-being of populations impacted by racial and ethnic discrimination through a variety of strategies such as supportive services in the aftermath of acts of hate or discrimination and promoting positive cultural identity amongst youth. Homelessness services. Supportive services providers help families mitigate the developmental delays related to the trauma of experiencing homelessness. Established Eastside providers of day center and shelter services are seeking to address large operational deficits. In addition, current and new providers are expanding hoteling programs to address the demand that cannot be met by existing shelters. In conclusion, on behalf of the commission, I want to thank the city council for its ongoing support of human services in the city of Bellevue. The COVID-19 pandemic has continued to create significant disruptions in many Bellevue residents' lives and the city's investment is crucial to support the community safety net and to provide the resources necessary for all of Bellevue's residents to thrive and achieve their full potential. Now I'll turn it back over to Toni.
Thank you. As evidenced by tonight's presentation, the demand for human services remains high in our community. And as we discussed earlier, the council has been highly responsive to the needs created by the pandemic by making significant investments. As we've come and presented recommendations to you throughout the pandemic, the council has expressed concerns about addressing these increased needs when pandemic funding is spent. In response, our leadership approved the release of an RFP for a consultant to complete not only the 2324 Human Services Needs Update, but also the city's first Human Services Strategic Plan. As you know, the Human Services Needs Update provides a compilation of data identifying human services needs in Bellevue and the region. A Human Services Strategic Plan will provide direction on an actionable way to address the human services needs and gaps in services through strategies, goals, and actions. Three areas of focus I will highlight this evening, first being the impact of funding. We've heard from you and discussions to human services providers, a desire to understand the measurable impact of the city's investments. A Human Services Strategic Plan would provide a roadmap for tracking this impact that would help the story, city tell the story of its investments while balancing the capacity and composition of agencies and the diversity of services that they provide and their ability to track data. It would also help us to address capacity. During each of the recent funding processes, we've received an unprecedented number of applications for funding at unprecedented levels of dollars as well. It would also help us to address capacity. During each of the recent funding processes, we've received an unprecedented number of applications for funding at unprecedented levels of dollars as well. A Human Services Strategic Plan would identify issues that need to be considered in light of the growing need in the community. For example, a consultant could help us consider whether the City of Bellevue should consider a more targeted and strategic approach for human services investments to ensure meaningful services to address the most critical need. And a third area I'll highlight for this plan is equity. We have increasingly recognized as a view that many community members need assistance to thrive because of the burdens of systemic inequities and racism on their lives. And in addition, the fact that many human services institutions were not created to address the needs of all diverse members of our communities. A strategic plan will help us assess the effectiveness of the city's human services funding in furthering equity. Outreach for this plan and for the needs assessment will include residents, including those who use our human services, also human services providers, the Human Services Commission, and input from you as well. In addition, our outreach efforts will be culturally responsive, including language translation and interpretation, to ensure that our diverse members are included. We hope to begin outreach in the next one to two months with anticipated returns to council for your vital input in November and January to seek input on, first, the Human Services Needs Update and subsequently the strategic plan. This plan would provide a roadmap for Bellevue to increasingly address inequity based upon best practices and based on the concerns we hear from the community. It will help the commission focus on the most important needs and meet council's policy direction. And with that, we will conclude. We again are seeking direction to prepare a resolution approving the commission's recommendations for this approximate $3 million of ARPA funding. And with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you for questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair Mansfield, for being here tonight. Deputy Mayor, you're the liaison to the Human Services Commission. Why don't we start with you?
Thank you, Mayor. Tony Sparza, thank you for being here tonight, and thank you, Chair Mansfield. Great presentation, really a lot of great information. And I just really want to first just thank the tremendous amount of work that the commission has been doing for quite some time now in terms of evaluating, processing vital funds into our, into our community. And just want to acknowledge the focus of the staff and the commission to continue to advance, continue to improve our equitable funding practices. Tony, you said something that, and I'm not aware of any other city that's doing this in terms of meeting with every agency that applies, walking through the process, and really making sure that they go away understanding what it's going to take in order to be, you know, viable in order to receive funds from, from, from the city. It's really just creating that level playing field that I've not heard any other city doing, and it's, and it's truly an equitable practice, and I'm just really proud of the, the work that we've been doing and, and that we've established these, these processes. So, so this is really important work, and, and not only that, but the amount of additional work that the commission has, I mean typically, we, we only meet twice a month, but we've been having to do additional rounds and additional research and reading outside of that. Staff has also kind of streamlined the process in some ways as well to make it easier for commissioners to evaluate all the, all the applications that have come in as well. So that's, so that's really great to see as well. So, yeah, because I think we all recognize additional funds to the community also require additional time, so I want to thank all the commissioners for all of their extra time. You know, I'm also very grateful for all the different agencies that work in Bellevue and continue to take on even more critical work in the city. You know, they serve our most vulnerable in our, in our community, and they just continue to get better and stronger and more efficient in the way that they're able to serve, serve those in our community. And, you know, the city could not support our residents without these partnerships, so they are truly vital, and we treat them like valued partners. I also think that is critical to us being effective, and we continue to do that, and I've heard that from multiple agencies. Again, that's something that they always feel as valued as they do here at the City of Bellevue, so something else I'm very proud about. And, you know, just really excited to see the additional ARPA funding that's going out into the community to address these, these issues. And, you know, these issues are always changing a little bit, and certainly we're addressing issues that, you know, we weren't addressing prior to the pandemic, you know, especially on the mental health side, with, with youth especially. You know, these are areas that we are hyper-focused on, and, and, you know, we're, we're not really sure what, what that means in the future either. Will that continue to be a critical need? Will it eventually get better? We certainly hope so, but the pandemic certainly has created new and additional needs in, in our, in our community, so. But, you know, I'm very excited about the, the funding of new and emerging agencies that have, that have applied, including those who are, who are trusted messengers in, in our community, trusted messengers amongst our diverse community. That's also very critical as part of this, that they're trusted. So proud of our city for the tremendous investment here that we've made in human services throughout the pandemic and moving forward and living our values as a city and showing that we're a caring and resilient Bellevue. So again, just, I probably have overused the word proud, but certainly am in, in this case and being the liaison to this, to this commission. So, great work, and I'm in favor of moving this resolution forward to approve the Human Services Commission's recommendation for the 2324 ARPA Critical Human Services Needs. And lastly, I really appreciate you bringing forward the strategic plan as well. I think we're really asking a lot of good questions there, you know, in regards to, you know, more of a business term, the ROI of our, of our investment here. You know, what is the impact? Is it targeted? Is it strategic? Is it going to the, to, to the right people at the right time with the right type of service? And is it equitable? So we're, we're asking all the right questions, so I appreciate you touching on that this evening as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you. As a former liaison to the Human Services Commission, I'll go next. Can't say enough about how much we appreciate what the Human Service Commission did during COVID to thoughtfully get together. You were one of the first commissions to get together and start getting the dollars out the door as soon as you could, and it was very thoughtfully done, and we really appreciate it, and it was very effective. And I look at the data, and I'm just so proud of the city for the support that they gave to the community, so thank you for that. But I do think it's time to reassess. We're not going to have that same ARPA dollars next time around, and so it is time to kind of reassess our values and how best we get money out the door and how do we get money in the door too. So I'm going to be very interested to see what they recommend with that. I know we do have some access to 1590 money, and I hope that we can really leverage that as best we can. I do have a question. I hate to ask a question because I know I wasn't there in the conversation, but I do have to ask. I see that there's one agency that got a, a, a large portion of the funding, more than anybody other agency, Open Doors for Multicultural Families, and I know they're located in Auburn and Redmond, and I'm curious why they beat out the Boys and Girls Club of Bellevue for their family and community resources, Imagine Housing for Basic Needs, and Crisis Connections for their 211 services. And it, it feels like, you know, maybe we should be a little more distributive of this money, this large amount of money that's going to one agency, but help me understand.
Sure, I can share a little bit, and then Chair Mansfield, if, if there's anything you want to add in, feel free. So first, a little background on Open Doors for Multicultural Families. They do have an office in Redmond at the Together Center, which is designed to serve the entire Eastside. They were founded by an individual that themselves has lived experience as an immigrant with a child with an intellectual disability that had difficulties navigating the special education system and accessing services for their child. And from that, this agency was born and now serves regionally throughout the region to meet that very specific need that's an intersection of two marginalized identities. So those with disabilities, those who may be immigrants, those who may not speak English as their primary language, that can pose, it's already a difficult system to navigate if you're a parent of a child with a disability or even an adult. If you add in layers of other barriers that you may experience, it is increasingly difficult to access those resources. So that's just a little bit of background. This is the first time that they are expanding this particular program onto the Eastside, and our Human Services Commission reviewed applications under a service area, and that is how they made their recommendations was within the service area. So I know you mentioned a couple of other really vital agencies. They weren't necessarily compared to the agencies within fostering well-being, so childcare was considered on its own, basic needs was considered on its own. I think the commission always has a tremendously difficult job of figuring out how to recommend funding across a really heavy demand of agencies, and I'm, I don't think there's ever a right or a wrong answer. It's, it's really just saying these are all priority needs, and, and where do we think there might be a really significant gap? And that was identified by the commission as an area of very significant gap on the Eastside for those two intersecting identities.
Okay, because they're getting more than any other agency that we're funding.
Close, not to count hairs, but the Boys and Girls Club is getting $250,000, so they are, they are actually getting more.
And, and this, and Open Doors is getting how much?
210.
Oh, I thought it was more than that. Okay. All right, that was my question. Councilmember Barxdale.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Really appreciate the equity-centered approach to this. I mean, even as I was, after I read through the agenda memo and looked through the actual funding, the agencies, it just really stood out to me, and I really appreciate that, that we're doing this, not only award, but indeed. I would also say, you know, many of the orgs that, organizations or agencies that are being funded here, you know, there are many that do service in our community, but not all of them have large galas that raise a lot of money to pay for the services that they provide. And so the way that I'm looking at this is, this is funding that is going to those agencies that provide culturally responsive services and typically don't have the money and are strapped often for funds in order to deliver those services. So just really appreciate the focus here on equity, and I like the idea of the strategic plan, so looking forward to that. And I would say, I know I've brought up in the past the wanting to understand the connection back to the community, so excited to see that. And that's primarily because, you know, at the end of the day, we want to make sure that the services are getting delivered back to the people who we come to understand need those services through the human needs assessment. So love it all, thank you, and look forward to supporting the resolution.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, well, Mayor. Thank you for being on the Human Service Commission. This is, I believe, in my opinion, the toughest commission anybody can ask to serve on. There's always more demand than money available, so you're always trying to juggle. You never satisfy, you know, everybody. And I appreciate the mayor asking the question, you know. It's a tough answer to give because, you know, you give money to somebody, somebody doesn't have it. So we are serving the same kinds, same needs, I hope. I think that's why the strategic plan is important. It's important because we just went through a pandemic and different circumstances, and the federal government gave us ARPA money, and like May said, it's not going to be here, right? We've got to really figure out how to do it right. One thing that, you know, has been a good thing for the city, for us with this pandemic is we're looking for added capacity. I've always advocated that when we're looking at how to help the community. We don't want to just keep the people who are, who's being helped. They, they manage better because they know how to access money, but it's the people who never access, that know how to access money. When you have a hit like this, I mean, they're desperate. They don't know where to go. So I think it's very worthwhile to look at the new capacity, which is through your outreach. That's why I appreciate that, because you go through outreach, that means you have to find different ways of getting the right organizations, right people that have never been helped before. I think we have a community that's very diverse, new immigrants, so we need to have trusted messengers. You know, I hope that these are all the goals, criteria you're looking at and to determine how to reach your people that need. So I, I'm not going to second-guess or question you which one is or which one isn't, because you're the one that spent. I, I was surprised, you only meet twice a month. I imagine, my recollection is sometimes you meet every, every month, maybe even more so, because there's just so much to look at. So I really appreciate what you're doing. I have a couple of questions. One is childcare, it's, you have more money than needed. Only one applicant, that's kind of surprising, because the council is being, always talking about childcare is very important. Everything we talk about, we need to provide more childcare. So maybe you can say a couple of words about that. Is it normal, or is it just aberration? Or what do you think?
Sure. Do you want me to jump in, or you want to go ahead?
Well, one of the things that we are seeing more of is that, yes, childcare is an increasing need, but there is more and more limited capacity in agencies to provide childcare. So while there's increasing need, there are less providers. So like on this round, I think we only had the one application seeking funding. So, and that's been an ongoing thing that we've been seeing in the Human Services applications, is that there just aren't enough agencies with capacity to request funding.
So how do we, how to address that challenge, that problem? I mean, that's what we do outreach, that's part of what we wanted to do. You've done outreach, so maybe that's something we need to put into our strategic plan, right? Because there needs still out there. Let's figure out how to.
We'll definitely include that, any feedback that we hear on that, Councilmember Lee. And as our chair mentioned, that's not just a pattern we're seeing with childcare. We are also seeing it in a few other critical areas. The deputy mayor mentioned behavioral health is a prominent need, and there's been a lot of data come out in the community recently about how difficult it is for people to be trained, hired, and retained as behavioral health providers as well. So there's a couple of really high area needs within the human services system that they are finding difficulty hiring and retaining staff to perform the critical work. And in fact, we have slated on an upcoming panel for the Human Services Commission that very topic, for us to have a variety of agencies come and present to the commission, and we'll definitely include what we hear in our strategic planning process.
That's why I've always been advocated so strongly that we need to be building our capacity. Instead of just giving money away, maybe we should take some of the money to really build agencies, people, nonprofits that can help to reach out to those services. As you mentioned, it's going to keep, we're not meeting them. If we don't do anything, just keep money to, the nonprofits exist, same old, same old, you're not going to improve the situation. So I think that's something I really like for you to think about in your strategy, you know, how do you build more capacity?
Great input.
Because the people are there.
Great input.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
And keep at it, but I like to make sure that happens. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Zahn.
Oh, thank you, Chair Mansfield, and thank you very much to the entire commission for this tough work. I did want to start with the disclosure. I'm on the board of the Sophia Way, so I think there's such a small portion of this, but I did want to make sure I have that disclosure provided. And then I really appreciate you helping us to understand the actions needed, so we do the human services need assessment, but now to have an actual strategic plan so we can maximize the impact to the community for every dollar that we spend, I think is really, really important. And that equitable funding framework like Councilmember Barxdale is talking about, to really understand how best to meet the needs and the gap of folks that for the first time post-COVID found them, or during COVID, found themselves in need of services and maybe not even understanding where the agencies are to go to for help, especially ones where maybe English is, is not their native language. So I'm just really so thankful for this work that you do. You know, when I was on the Board of Health, we did declare racism as a public health crisis and recognizing that all of the systems need work. I want to thank Councilmember Lee for bringing up the, building the capacity, because having served on boards of nonprofits that are served on boards of nonprofits that are in the homelessness and food insecurity standpoint, they're trying to serve the community, but the very people that are actually trying to serve the community are themselves also at risk. So how we actually look at the pay that we're able to provide to those agencies that are providing that service to us, I think is going to be really important. So I especially want to lift up and thank you for the Eat Happy, where it's a win-win-win where we're able to source food that might go to waste and serve the community as well as the essentials first, where, you know, having hygiene kits that provide the dignity for people to actually be able to have soap and shampoo, I think is really, really important. I guess a couple of things I do want to lift up, and that is that what I heard at the state level is that the We Feed Washington Fund is only funded by one-third. So instead of 103 million, they only got 35 million. So to the degree that through our maybe Genesee's work along with the Human Services Commission and staff, whether we can do some work to really look at how we're going to fill that gap of the food insecurity, whether there's federal, state, local funding that might be available, are there private funders that we can tap on? Because those 400 organizations statewide, a number of them are feeding the food insecurity for our community, so that would be one of my asks. The other one that I would ask too is on the ARPA funds, you know, the National League of Cities, we hear from our, from other, about the fact that we need to tell our story because it was really hard fought for us to get direct funding to cities from Congress. So I would really encourage us to provide those stories to the National League of Cities so that as well as Congresswoman Bennet and Congressman Smith, because when Councilmember Lee and I met them in DC, one of the things that we heard from them is they need to hear our stories about how those funds, the $20 million, are making an impact in our community because that's what it's going to take to potentially have additional federal funding dollars that come to cities. And I know how much we have served our community. And so to be able to tell our story is going to be even more important. So I would say that that would be my ask is whether we can do more around advocacy on the food insecurity side, the wages for the people in those nonprofits, and then telling our story. If you would like to say anything to those. Thank you.
Excellent points. Thank you.
Thank you for giving your suggestions. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, this is really, I think, one of the better presentations I've seen because you're doing some new things and all. I appreciate that very much. And I really acknowledge all the comments that my colleagues have made on this. And this is a, this is probably the really toughest issue we face in the city in dealing with these things. I mean, you know, we can build bridges and we can do this, we can get light rail, all but this is, this, and they all have their problems, but this is the one that's really hard to get to. And I think the commission and the staff are doing a great job in trying to get to that. What concerns me is looking at this over year after year, and I hope there's some changes, but the perennial thing is that, you know, we can never get, we never have enough to meet the need. And every one of these grants is short of what people ask for. And I know you work with them on is that you really need this or that? How many of this you need or can you do something better? And to come back and have to have a resolution approving another 3 million of funding, which fortunately we get from ARPA, to address critical human service needs, I think tells us something about some systemic things we need to work on. I think you're starting to do that and I think that was a good line, a good idea on that. But what I'm concerned with is every year, we always come to this level and we have significant gaps and we have to fill them. And are you, it sounds like you're starting to enter really working at that, what can we do? And what can you come back to the councils and back to staff and say, these are some changes in the way we do this process. This is maybe a change in the role of the commission. Because the impression is the commission has a very strong role, but there's so much else going on around it that affect it. And it must be difficult to keep up with, we're funding here, but something's funding over here outside of the commission. The commission only has a certain block of things of human service needs that are funded come through it. A lot of funding goes in other places. So I'm just, I'm hoping that, and it sounds like you're making some strides in being more holistic in it, and maybe coming back with a proposal for a different way for the Human Services Commission to function and scope and work, how they do it. And I think that'd be very helpful. In the meantime, we have to deal with the current needs. And I'm hoping that, because this 3 million is not going to be there every year. We can't count on this coming to make up the difference. And if we hadn't gotten this, that's a heck of a lot of people aren't going to get served. So I think this is, given where we are in this process and all, I think you're just doing a terrific job. And I also appreciate the fact that you are actually giving us more insight and more things to look at and say, we need to do better than this and we can. Because we're talking about dealing with people that, you know, really need the help. And as everybody said, the pandemic has caused things. We're always changing. The demographics have changed and it's always complex. But Human Services Commission is the bright light of humanity. And I'm just hoping that we can start, we can look at this and see if there are better ways and more, better way to focus the funding instead of having, sometimes going off in different directions and so. But the need's always going to be more than we can meet, but hopefully we can get a lot, a lot closer on that. So thank you very much and I'm ready to support this and I'm ready to, let's work on it for next year.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes.
Thank you. Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mayor. One thing I know to be true is that the council has a lot of confidence and trust in the Human Services Commission. You guys do a great job and we all, we all really appreciate the work. Yes, I'm in favor of moving this forward. I have a couple of questions about that and then I'd like to talk about the strategic plan. The, I'm wondering, I know we talked a lot about childcare and that is a concern to me. And I love the idea of capacity building. I'm wondering if we can do future outreach to providers to try to, I mean, please take our money, but we want the services for our people, right? I'm wondering if we have some nonprofits that would be willing to be administrators of a program where we could have public-partnerships. There's a lot of very expensive childcare centers in Bellevue. If we had a nonprofit that could reserve, say, five slots in each one and had funding for that, I mean, assuming we have the funding, we could potentially fund childcare closer to where people are in the neighborhoods using some of those for-profit companies, but having slots be for people in need, where the nonprofit is paying via Bellevue funds for those slots. I think we should really start to think innovatively about how we might facilitate childcare because childcare is one of the things that makes it possible for families to work jobs, for parents to work jobs and, or go to school to better the economic well-being of that family. So let's, let's really, maybe the strategic plan can dig into that. I had a question about why the subcategory of family homelessness, that there was zero funding granted in that. And that's on the worksheet or on the spreadsheet, it is on page three, focuses on families experiencing homelessness or unstably housed. Am I looking at the right one? Actually, one of them, KidVantage was funded, but the Boys and Girls Club was not and Imagine Housing was not. Why is that?
Give me one second to get to the right page. Thank you for that great question. So that is in the basic needs category. So there is a separate category that was for homelessness. This was specifically basic needs that are things like what have been discussed tonight, like toiletry kits, feminine hygiene projects, products. And so, again, difficult for the commission to decide where to allocate those dollars. They tried to allocate them to places that reached the entire community and that provided specific items. So there were a couple of great agencies that applied. They got raised in another question this evening that do a different type of work to address basic needs, but weren't distributing actual items. And the commission felt that distributing the actual items was a priority with these dollars.
Got it. Okay, and then youth mental health, I know that there's lots of behavioral health here. I think that that is critically important. We've seen the needs only growing for that. I am wondering, because we can't fill all the needs even with this one-time money, is there any effort when people come in with applications that we can't necessarily fill to refer them to King County? Because King County collects a lot of money out of Bellevue for behavioral health, including Best Starts for Kids, some of these youth programs. How can we help them compete for that money? And also, compound question, can we put them into the queue for all the behavioral health for the 1590 money? So that's a question and then I want to make a quick comment about the strategic plan.
Thank you. And yes, behavioral health continues to be an increasing need, especially for the youth in our community. So relative to your questions about helping agencies connect with King County, this has been an area we've identified in collaboration with the intergovernmental relations as well of how we can help agencies make those connections. So we are doing a number of things towards that effort. One is when we become aware of a funding opportunity, we maintain an extensive list of contacts for providers on the east side. And so we share those notifications and RFPs with them. Two, we will be monitoring in-person every agency that we contract with this year. And so we always monitor in two ways. One's called desk monitoring and one is in-person monitoring. The pandemic limited us to desk monitoring, clearly. This year, we are taking on in-person monitoring for every single agency to make sure we have eyes on the ground and see the services that our residents are providing. We have added to our monitoring checklist questions relative to exactly what you have raised. Are you receiving any King County funding? What barriers do you experience when you want to apply for King County funding so that we can bring that back and be thoughtful about how to better approach that?
Great, because yeah, there's a lot of opportunities to crossqualulate
Yes.
to help our residents via these programs. And are we capturing the behavioral health or ones that could be eligible for 1590 funding? Are we capturing those and also using that list to say, hey, here's another way to fund?
Yes.
We're doing that.
Yes.
Great. Okay, on the strategic plan, I agree with the mayor about looking at funding and financing, on looking at the need, looking at revenue, how we raise money, how we can, also the whole pot of funding for human services, there's the Bellevue, but then we have our different silos. We have our 1590 money. King County raises tax money in Bellevue for human services that maybe we could do that. There's the different, there's the community development block grants. So we have all these silos and I know that the money, the different colors of money, it has to be used consistent with whatever program it is. But I think it would be really useful to make sure that the strategic plan, it maybe looks at all the silos, but looks at how they overlap and how they can work together so that, so that when you're reading the strategic plan, you understand where does the money come from, what is it for? And I mean, it would be great if we could break down the silence. I know we can't because of, there's things like the auditor's office might object, but we need to make sure that people understand where the money comes and that I, the council, the not, you know, the Human Services Commission and the public and the providers understand where that is. And also like to see ultimately come out of a strategic plan, a dashboard, that we could monitor, you know, where's the money going? What's it doing? How effective it is? I think that we're already doing a lot of that. We really hold our providers accountable and I'm really proud of the city for that. But being able to see it will be much more helpful. And I think that it will allow long-term, a feedback loop that then is much more accessible to people, including the Human Services Commission, when, you know, five, six years from now, when they're looking at some of these people that got money, how effective were they? And we can make better funding decisions and make, you know, to do the more, even more effective funding of services. So that's what I'd love to see in the strategic plan, but I'm yes to the strategic plan. I'm yes for the funding on this and I thank staff and the Human Services Commission for their very heavy work.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson.
Yeah, thank you for that input. I will just say that you've heard from multiple council members about the importance of childcare. We hear about it from the community all the time. And one thing that would be interesting is to look at, I know there's a lot of interest of people who live in the community becoming childcare providers and creating pathways for them to get certified. I know that we can push for construction of childcare facilities and new buildings. And in our housing, we can push for three and four-bedroom, maybe one unit that could act as a childcare facility in-house with a certified provider. So let's keep that on the table as well.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Lee, you have one more.
Thank you. One quick note, because I was, I'm interested so much on building capacity, like Councilmember Janice mentioned, some of the new organizations, you know, if you don't help them, if they don't survive because they're not competitive, they may become the people we need in the future. So I think, I will, I know that you've done quite a bit getting some new, I would like to have you provide us who are the new nonprofits, the new capacity if built during this round. Thank you.
Okay, we can get, you can get back to him. And then Councilmember Zahn, you had a question as well.
Yeah, I did. So I fully support this, but I think that really my colleagues are all speaking about the fact that there's $4 million of need that we know we're not funding today. And I heard several talk about, I think, Mayor, as well as Councilmember Robertson, talk about the 1590 money. So instead of waiting until the strategic plan is done, is there, or can we bring back the discussion on the 1590 money where up to 40% can be used for services so that we can take a look at whether some of the unfunded $4 million, if you assess them and find that they're all legitimate and worthy cost, that we can find a way to fund those without waiting for the next full round? So I'd just like to better understand what's possible.
Sure, absolutely. I will provide some brief comments, but you do have a presentation coming, I believe, next week on 1590 that would help you kind of see that in its fullness based on the recommendations that will be coming that evening. One clarification I would provide is that the services portion of the funding that the council approved the framework for, that 15% by statute is limited to a few types of services. So it's behavioral health and housing-related services. So it couldn't necessarily step into this full $4 million gap, even if that is a direction that the council wished to go. And I think much like all the other decisions we've talked about tonight, there's a lot of competing needs. And so you'll hear about that next week when staff come and the competing need of development of affordable housing, supportive housing, and the costs that come with that. I know that was a factor when council adopted the current framework, so that will be a hard question to answer for sure.
Yeah, I know. It's not easy, but thank you for letting us know about the 1590 discussion. I think it's all a part of the whole. And as Councilmember Robertson talked about, it's all the different buckets of money and all the rules. But I think moving with more urgency is what you're hearing from all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, I'll let you, Councilmember Robertson, add another.
Just, I was, as I'm listening to my colleagues, maybe one of the things in the strategic plan we should work on is trying to get a common app. I just finished my last kid getting into college and the common app is a joyful thing for college applicants, right? So if we could do something like that where people could apply once into several different programs and maybe we can enter in an ILA with King County and some of the others to have a streamlined app, that would make it so much easier. People could, one app and they applied to multiple programs. Just a thought.
That sounds like a good question to the consultants.
Right, yeah. I mean, something the strategic plan to think about.
I'll briefly say, so many important questions you've raised. I also want to be proud of where Bellevue was already doing some of the things that you have raised. And so lots of room for addressing capacity building. I also want to make sure that we have shared openly with you that you did fund a capacity building cohort for seven small diverse agencies that are working with an agency called Communities Rise that's helping them on board governance, technology, finance-type issues. So small step in the right direction, but we have taken that step. As far as the common app, we are, we do a common app with all of the other suburban cities. So northeast, south, all use one portal, one application. Agencies fill out one application, and then they click which cities they want to apply to. That's for our general fund. That is not for 1590 or CDBG, but we're getting there.
1590 general fund all together for Bellevue.
Just want to acknowledge the good work where it is happening with lots of acknowledgement of places to grow.
Yeah, all right, great. Thank you so much. With that, we'll take a break. Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you. We won't take a break quite yet. We're going to give you direction. How's that? Could you give us a motion to?
Prepare a resolution approving the Human Services Commission's recommendations for the 2324 ARPA critical human services needs funding for the final action at a future meeting.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, there you go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're going to take a break till quarter till. All right, we have our second two out of three study session items. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. The next item is an informational update on the city's Keep Bellevue Beautiful program. This evening, staff will share an update on the city's new Keep Bellevue Beautiful program that includes a volunteer program as well as other program elements. Just by way of background, the council approved this program as part of the 2324 budget and also was a council priority identified over many years. This is an informational update, so we aren't looking for any specific direction from the council. Joining us at the table tonight is Mike McCormick, Assistant Director. To his left is Mark Heilmann, Neighborhood Outreach Manager. And we have a new person with us this evening that actually was funded as part of the budget, and her name is Serena Miller. She's Communication Community Relations Coordinator, also with the Community Development Department. And with that, I'm going to hand it off to you, Mike.
Thank you very much, City Manager Miyake. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House, council members. A pleasure being with you tonight and being able to talk about Keep Bellevue Beautiful. As our city manager mentioned, this initiative is part of the safe, clean, and vibrant city initiatives that you council passed this last budget cycle. And the reason we're calling it Keep Bellevue Beautiful is because it really is about a partnership model with our community focused on helping to keep Bellevue litter free. We're also going to tackle abandoned shopping carts and probably depending on conversation next week, how we're doing dealing with graffiti prevention and removal. Tonight's informational briefing is focused really on the first two topics, focused on keeping Bellevue litter free and the abandoned shopping carts. So as we mentioned, this, the presentation is for information only, and we are going to provide you with some details about the program, its elements, and its timeline tonight. But I wanted to stress that the purpose tonight really is to provide you with our roadmap on how we're going to join and really fan the flames of the community momentum that is behind helping to keep Bellevue beautiful. So as you know, from our annual performance surveys, our residents agree or strongly agree that Bellevue has attractive and well maintained neighborhoods. It always rates consistently high. One of the things that you also know that our community both has holds us as a high value and will take action to maintain. So this morning, I was reminded about some inspiration and sources of inspiration from our community about keeping Bellevue litter free. One being the example of our local high school students who made the commitment and pledge to fill a bag of litter every day on their way to and from school. Another grassroots effort, as mentioned in oral communications tonight, was Bellevue Green and Clean, which is sponsoring local efforts of the community on their own initiative to go out there and pick up litter across our community citywide. I'm also really touched by the comments tonight, both by the Bellevue Chamber as well as our Bellevue Downtown Association and our community members stressing their support of this initiative. And I just wanted to speak to them and say, we will be following up for that partnership and and future engagement. Really is wonderful to see. Keep Bellevue Beautiful is designed to provide pathways for the community to engage in helping us keep our community safe, vibrant, and beautiful. So to walk us through the program elements and the next steps, I want to turn things over to Mark Heilmann, our Neighborhood Outreach Manager.
Thanks, Mike. Good evening, council. It's great to be able to discuss this together and appreciate the initiative that you've taken and also that the community has taken through the years in their neighborhoods, their streets. This is somewhat of a coordination effort, and we've been working with other departments to learn what they are doing. And we do want to emphasize that city staff, city programs are going to continue a number of things as far as removing large debris, hazardous materials, streetscapes, maintenance, et cetera, a number of things that staff and the community are doing as volunteers. As the city has multiple ways to keep our streets and public spaces clean and maintained, Keep Bellevue Beautiful is going to be a supplemental program to these city efforts and look forward to working with other city staff and with volunteers. But even with the significant efforts that the city has taken through the years, there has been an increase in requests for trash removal. From the year 2020 to present, there have been about 200 requests for trash removal. Our efforts will be responsive to My Bellevue app submissions for trash removal, and we do ask the public, and we will continue to publicize this, we ask the public to assist our efforts by reporting trash removal needs through the My Bellevue app. As we track the resident requests, there are hotspots, and we are noticing patterns in areas of highest needs that we will prioritize with Keep Bellevue Beautiful, and we will continue to continue to adjust as we hear from the public. The implementation, the implementation of Keep Bellevue Beautiful will begin in a phased approach this summer, and we're excited to launch Phase One, which will begin our volunteer cleanup events. The first event we have scheduled is for July 29th with a Saturday morning cleanup in downtown. We have heard from the BDA and from the Chamber and are going to be responding to them, and also neighborhood associations in downtown and throughout the city. We will continue those conversations and coordinating for the years to come. We are also very appreciative of large corporations and very small businesses that have reached out to us, and we see just great opportunities for partnerships and sponsorship. The second volunteer event is planned for the Factoria neighborhood for Saturday morning, August 12th. In addition to being a great way to meet neighborhood, to meet neighbors, this will be an opportunity for residents to contribute to the community in a very practical way. For both of the events, there will be an opportunity to sign up online to volunteer, and we've gotten responses for that already, even as the program is beginning to launch and as Serena's only been here for one week. Very important part of this program is that it is efficient, working with things that are already happening. And as we launch the three Keep Bellevue Beautiful phases over the next several months, we will coordinate with education and outreach efforts that exist through utilities and environmental sustainability, through schools and the community with greener living education. Keep Bellevue Beautiful will provide very practical applications of what residents are learning through green and clean, our greener living, and provide opportunities for community service, and we plan to cross promote education and events together. So folks that volunteer will also find out about ways that they can learn and advocate for prevention of litter as well. Phase Two of Cape Bellevue Beautiful launch will be this fall, as we plan to expand on one day volunteer events to include several high need and highly visible signature streets throughout the city and throughout different neighborhoods. These are streets that shape resident and visitor first and lasting impressions of our community. These thoroughfares reflect the hotspot and transit stop requests that we have received and will allow residents to be part of an event in an area of interest to them. This effort will also allow us to adapt and learn from our summer events and build on that. We plan to explore additional partnerships with Washington State Department of Transportation and Sound Transit for future efforts as well. Phase Three, and I do want to emphasize, we're going to be learning through each of these. This is a community and volunteer effort. We're going to be learning along with our community, though we have done a lot of research from peer communities and also regional communities, but we're going to adapt this to what fits our residents and their high interests. But the third phase and ongoing will be an adopt a steep, adopt a street program in neighborhoods that will allow community organizations, neighborhood associations, and businesses to focus their ongoing volunteer work on their own neighborhood or a place of high interest. Partners will meet a level of commitment and frequency and will provide supply, and we will provide supplies for their adopt a street efforts. We are working on opportunities for corporate partnerships and sponsorships for neighborhood associations and community groups, and then they will qualify for recognition signage, and we're working through what the the levels would be for how they would receive that signage recognition. We are working on key performance indicators, and some of those may include number of volunteer hours, number of volunteers, number of bags collected, and weight of bags. So continuing to learn of what is really an accurate way to to measure success. This new volunteer effort will be reliant on community volunteerism and will be a success through a whole community effort, and we know our community. We know how they will volunteer and how much they care about their neighborhoods, and we are hearing, as I said, from a number of organizations that are very interested in volunteering and organizing. So again, three phases, looking at this summer, all of these being volunteer efforts, but volunteer recruitment as we do the two cleanup events in downtown and Factoria, working on education and outreach as we begin signature street efforts, and then working toward the ongoing opportunities for adopt a street campaign. I'm going to turn to Mike then to discuss about shopping carts.
So a companion piece to this has been an effort that really has sprung out of the city manager's office to launch a retrieval, removal and retrieval of abandoned shopping carts. So the good news, thanks to their efforts, is we established a contract with a provider beginning this last month in April, which provides weekly collection of abandoned shopping carts. So this really focuses on the abandoned carts that are found in public right of ways, sidewalks, roadways, public trails, or city owned parks and city owned property. So one of the things that we want the public to know is that there are ways to identify abandoned shopping carts, and as testimony gave earlier this evening, the simplest way is to use the My Bellevue app, take a picture of the abandoned shopping cart and report it, and that'll get into us. We're able to then look at the locations of the shopping carts and work with the contractor to be able to to retrieve or to get shopping carts and remove them and return them to their their owners. One other thing to note is that although we've only provided the service for four weeks, we have already collected 342 shopping carts. So and we next week, so we are going to be sending out a letter to all of our retail establishments and informing them on their requirements to retrieve their own shopping carts as well. So this contract and this effort is supplemental to local efforts and responsibilities of our retail providers. So they have a responsibility to do that, and we want them to live into that responsibility as well. So this program is up and running and doing a great service to our community as well, and we will be monitoring it to see how we need to continue to change and adapt it to meet the the demands. And with that.
Do want to go to a final slide here that gives a summary that this is a one city approach, that as city staff continue to do what they are doing with large debris, hazardous materials, and streetscapes, also parks and utilities, have volunteer programs with events and programs that the supplemental portion that as we launch Keep Bellevue Beautiful will be part of that, we will be as efficient as possible, but we will begin to launch one day volunteer events, adopt a street ongoing volunteer program, managing the shopping cart removal, and then in time with with guidance, advanced graffiti abatement options. So thank you, council. Appreciate your initiative. Also appreciate the initiative that our community has taken in small ways that are not documented, but they do it because they love their neighborhoods tremendously, and we want to serve with them. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you so much. Councilmember Zahn, let's start with you.
Yes, thank you. I I love this. We can all show our love for Bellevue, and and I love the name Keep Bellevue Beautiful. And welcome, Selena. I understand you're from out of town, so I hope that you love our city as much as we do. And, you know, if I could do a happy dance on the on the dais, I would, because this is something that's near and dear to me. I first heard about it from Bellevue Clean and Green back before COVID. And I know it's taken a while when I brought it up to the retreat in 2021 to finally get this going in with the budget last year, but I am just so delighted that every one of us are all in to keep Bellevue beautiful. And the the type of engagement that we can do where really Selena is like the force of one, that's going to be the force multiplier, right? That's going to keep our community coming together to make our city beautiful. And the the pieces around not just litter, right? Picking up the carts, the I saw in here about the zero waste, so I don't know how many were able to take advantage of the BYOC where there are a number of coffee shops that if you bring your own cup, they were doing like you get a free cup of coffee. So we're trying to reduce the amount of waste that goes in. So I just love all the things that this is about, which is how do we show the pride in our city by bringing the community together and working together? So I I guess a couple of things I was going to mention, and that is that when we think about the partnership, I know when I was going out with the Clean and Green picking up litter, that the trash receptacles that King County Metro puts out there, they put the strap in there so that you can't put big trash in, but it keeps actually even small trash from actually getting in the garbage can. So I think there's a number of those efforts that we might need to think about, as well as I know that when they do pick up trash, they don't know where the bags go, so the ability to really actually pick up the trash afterwards. I love the calendar. I wonder if we could do that as a dashboard, an active calendar, helping Bellevue Clean and Green overdue comes, I believe, every other Saturday to pick up litter. So being able to promote those programs, working with the high schools, I think those are all great things, pop ups. So and I see Brad here from Visit Bellevue. I think actually, you know, this is one of those where visitors coming into the city, they can see the kind of things that we're doing to make sure that Bellevue continues to to be beautiful, not just for our community, but for our visitors as well. And lastly, I would just say that as I think about this work, maybe just like we have a transportation bee, we could have a mascot for the beautiful Bellevue litter free. So I don't know if we have one of those, but if we don't, maybe that would be part of our kind of logo for the Keep Bellevue Beautiful is that we have a mascot, just like for our transportation department. And I look forward to to this work. It's going to be amazing, right? Because that's how we activate the entire community to show just as much pride and love for our community as we do. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Councilmember Robertson.
Yeah, this is all good things. Couple of comments. The getting to the phase where we start getting people to adopt streets, once we're in that phase, I think it would be really nice to, I assume that we have some sort of material in our economic development department that we give to new businesses to include something like that in the welcome to Bellevue for our businesses. We also should be pushing it out to our nonprofits, community associations, schools. And I know, for example, I've got a high school senior, there are kids, luckily not my daughter, who are scrambling right now for their community service hours. If we can give community service hours to high school students as part of this to clean it up, it can be just an ongoing thing. You know, you pick up, pick up litter, log your time, submit it, you know, show us the proof, and we'll give you your hours. It might be a way to get people who just need something to do to get those 40 hours that they're required to graduate to really make their neighborhood more beautiful. I really like, I like the idea of a mascot, but I really like, I also really like the idea of signage. I think that this is worthy of having some signs made, especially in the high litter corridors that are Keep Bellevue Beautiful, do not litter. I remember when I was a kid, there was lots of littering going on, and we, there was a big national push with television ads, et cetera, to get people to stop littering, and people stopped littering. And for some reason, in the last decade or so, I think people have forgotten, and people have started littering again. So, you know, some sort of way to push the message out there, including signage, I think would be really helpful. Working with WashDOT on cleaning up the freeway. Working with WashDOT on cleaning up the freeway on and off ramps. I know those aren't our jurisdiction, but you talked about making sure that the corridors that are the front doors or the representation of Bellevue, a freeway off ramp into Bellevue is a represent, you know, is one of those entrances into Bellevue, and that's our front door. And when they're filled with garbage, as a lot of them are, it really leaves a very poor impression. I'm super excited about the shopping cart. I remember when the council passed that code, which calls them nuisances. My, I have a question and a comment about the shopping carts. My question is, when we're letting these retailers know that we have their shopping carts, are we making them do anything to get them back? Because it is a nuisance, we could fine them for allowing their shopping carts to go all over and be off their property and, you know, in wetlands and on sides of roads, et cetera. So that's a question, and my comment is, for anyone that's ever grocery shopped in British Columbia, a lot of retailers have their shopping carts in a type of corral, kind of like the smart cart. And you have to put a, I think a loonie, which is a dollar coin, in to release it, and the loonie stays in the shopping cart, which gives people a big incentive to return their cart because they need to return their cart to get that money back. If if some of the retailers here found it more cost-effective to in to create that sort of system, we would probably not only have fewer carts go missing, but you might have some good citizens who want to get the money out of the cart, retrieving them and putting them back for us. So and I know they have a system where if you're a regular shopper there, they give you a basically a slug that's attached to your keys that you can use for that. But it it really helps reduce a lot of the shopping carts going going crazy up in the Vancouver, Wash, Vancouver, British Columbia area. So what are we doing? Are we are we getting them to buy in or pay us or agree to something under the chapter 910 Bellevue City Code, shopping cart nuisance, to get their carts back? And two, are we educating the retailers to help them help us help them? Keep them from going astray?
Thank you, those are great suggestions and great comments. In answer to your question on the shopping carts, at this point, are we doing outreach and education to the retailers about what their responsibilities is and informing them of our code? Absolutely, and that's part of the outreach efforts that even next week we'll we'll roll out to the retailers. In terms of whether or not they're currently paying fines on what we're returning, the answer to that is no. Right now, we are just returning the carts as a courtesy to them, but we are tracking who we're returning them to and how many. And that will inform future decisions as this program rolls forward, for sure.
Well, if we want them to take some responsibility, I know the carts are expensive, so they don't want them to go astray. But if we want them to take some responsibility for solving the problem, we need to give them some incentive. And if we just return them at taxpayer cost with no requirement for them to step up and do better, I don't think that that's going to give them much incentive to step up and do better. So I hope that as this go, I mean, this is just starting, but as it goes along, we need to give them incentive to step up and do better. Thanks.
Thank you for your input. Okay, councilmember Braxdale.
Appreciate the the briefing. I volunteered years ago with Adopt a Street work. And one of the things I remember is, not in addition to picking up trash, was just the experience of doing that with people as a community effort. So excited about that program. You know, I would, I guess I would say I was, for the past couple of years, been bringing up snow removal on sidewalks. And I'm curious if as this expands over time, if we could include, because I I think this covers summer, spring, fall, and winter when it's not snowing. And there could still be volunteer efforts to help with clearing sidewalks at key bus stations or rail, like rail stations or what have you, where so many of our essential workers will need to take public transit to get to work, including our retail workers, right? And so I was curious if that would be something we could look at and when we might be able to factor that in. And then I want to say something in terms of the shopping carts. There's all the talk about AI and machine learning. And I, you know, I think at some point, we're going to get to self-returning carts. But in the meantime, but in the meantime, you know, I wonder if, so there are some anti-theft carts today that outlet, retail outlets or what have you could use. And I'm curious if that's something we could promote as a way to prevent carts from leaving the perimeter of the store. And that would be a way to shift those costs away from having to contract to having, preventing the carts from getting away outside of that perimeter to begin with.
What if I do snow and you do AI?
Okay.
As far as snow removal, we'll continue to encourage folks to volunteer and help their neighbors, and we'll look into that as a possibility with this program as well. We do have a number of seniors particularly, that's a, and and folks that use wheelchairs, that's a very significant portion of their life. So however that gets solved, we will continue to push that forward as a lived experience for folks. So thank you.
One of the things I I took down your comment in terms of educational materials to provide to retailers in terms of the anti-theft carts that are available, and we can work that to include that into our materials. In terms of the AI features of the carts, I think we'll wait and see. I assume they'll be telling us all what to do and where to go.
Okay, great, thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Great job, thank you.
Is that it? Okay, councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I think this is a really great idea and really applaud a strong framework to keep the city being a beautiful place to live and applaud the city's efforts to keep the community alert and helping, also helping our citizens who need help to be in a beautiful city and get involved in this. And I think there's a lot of things we can do with that. I think, and I look at the bigger picture, we've talked about, we had hints of things down the line. The plan right now is really great. It's kind of a clean, green, clean, safe, and compassionate. And the last parts we'll be working on. But it's just a great idea. And I think people, it'll get a lot more people engaged, hopefully get a lot of kids engaged. We've seen these recently about kids running up the doors and banging on the doors. And I think they're just bored, and maybe we can get them out there doing something that'll be more active. I'm all for this, and I think it's a great idea. I think we can take this and and over the years, build this into something that really gets the complete community understanding. And one of the things that makes Bellevue beautiful is because people of all aspects can live here and enjoy it. And that's the, I think, if we reach that goal, we really have hit, you know, the goal standard. So let's do it.
Thank you, councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we all know, Bellevue is a great place for people to come to live. People come here because it's a nice place. It's clean, it's safe, and all other reasons. And so it's, you know, everybody knows that, everybody wants to do that. Everybody has, you know, the message. But I think the city has a big role in this. It's about time that we actually have a program. We can tell everybody, you know, how great Bellevue is, you know, how wonderful we are. But this, this is the kind of thing, we have to depend on individuals. You know, people have to to want to do it. People need to be motivated. People, but people are motivated, but not bad enough that they would just go ahead, you know. City has to be the leader, city has to provide it example, to make it easy, to make it, you know, possible for them to do it. So like all the ideas everybody has been given to you. I mean, I'm, I believe that you have a lot more ideas than we do. So I'm not going to spend the next five hours talking to you about how to do it. But I believe that we need to provide those important actions, working with the community associations, working with neighborhoods, working with schools, working with kids, education, all that is part of it. But we have to make sure that we give people the opportunity and like you guys have been doing. And I appreciate you working with neighborhoods, talking to folks. But again, talking is not good enough. You have to say, well, providing you with the tools, providing you with receptacles, to providing with events. You know, I think everybody would be happy to do one of those things as long as they think that we are supporting it, we're encouraging it, we're behind it. So thank you for doing it, this is the right time. After pandemic, people, the timing's right. People want to actually be, you know, doing something outdoor perhaps or doing things that they normally would not do. So I think it's a good time. So thank you, and I hope we're going to make it work. Thanks.
Great, thank you, I'll just be quick. You know, thank you for the presentation. And Mike, I just really appreciated you talking about the community input into this initiative. And you talked about the high school students. That was Ellie Johnson, who was a sophomore at Bellevue High School who created a one-bag-a-day garbage pickup program that she did for at least a year, if not two, every single day, all over Bellevue with some of her friends. And some of us all joined in, including our police department one day. So it's just great to be community-activated. And obviously, we're going to have partnerships going forward with this. And so partnerships with our community, partnerships with our our employers and our grocery stores for the cart pickup. So I'm I'm excited to see what your recommendation is coming back to us. But appreciate you moving this forward.
Because I was just looking at the timeline, and maybe I didn't pick it up the first time. It says Adopt a Street campaign starts in Phase Three. But what I wanted to understand is, I know that Bellevue Clean and Green has already reached out to WashDOT and is actually working on people filling out a form to adopt interchanges and doing training and doing pop-ups already for Adopt a Street. So although we're not doing that until officially till spring of 2024, if they're already moving forward, we we could actually start helping them even sooner so that maybe we don't officially launch until spring of 2024. I just wanted to make sure that as you are, you know, ramping up, that I think some in the community are a little fed of us. And so, you know, being able to incorporate the work that they're already doing and using like the the Litter Rachi app where you actually get to take photos and note the trash so that it gets counted.
Maybe that's a question.
Yeah, so maybe that's my question is like the how that timing gets blended in.
Do you want to answer that? Sure, sure. So we are in touch, I would say about every 14 days or so with with Steve through Bellevue Green and Clean. So we will give an update after this evening and just looking for those opportunities to to work together. There are things around what the city does with legalities and that sort of thing that we're working through waivers and safe routes and that sort of thing that from a very informal standpoint are are different than what the city needs to require. But we're in touch with Steve and other folks and look forward to informally encouraging as best we can.
Great, thank you.
Yep, they've done great to initiate stuff that helps us have some great lessons learned.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, council.
Just want to say thank you to council for really taking deliberate action and launching this initiative. So really appreciate the ways that you care about our neighborhoods and our whole city in making room for this. So thank you.
Okay, we're on to our last item, Mr. Miyaki.
So thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. The last study session topic for you this evening is an update on the city's tourism promotion area. Just by way of background, in February, council approved an ordinance establishing a Bellevue-Redmond Tourism Promotion Area. Since then, staff have worked to satisfy the requirements of the interlocal agreement and establishment of the ordinance. After the update, staff are looking for council direction to return at a future meeting with an ordinance establishing the TPA Advisory Board as to as to create two new chapters in the Bellevue Code. At the table this evening is Jesse Canado, our Chief Economic Development Officer. To his right is Lori Hoffman, Arts Community Manager, both from the Community Development Department. With that, I'll go ahead and hand off to you, Jesse.
Thank you, City Manager Miyaki. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Opportunities for tourism seem bright this year with airlines predicting record travel, with the city preparing, with Bellevue preparing to welcome the Intercon, Intercontinental Hotel and a trio of chef-driven restaurants with our bigger and bolder bellwether and with the city's first dedicated Pride events this June. We are very excited to be here talking about what hopefully are the last elements setting up the tourism promotion area, before we come back to you later this year, but talking about operations of the tourism promotion area. So just wanted to give those comments and and thank our industry partners and Visit Bellevue for helping us and supporting us in creating this tourism promotion area that will help market all of these great new opportunities here in Bellevue to the world. With that, I'll hand it off to Lori.
All right, thank you so much, Jesse. Before we get into the specifics of the Tourism Promotion Area Advisory Board, which will be what we talk about mainly today, I wanted to take a moment to refresh on some of the basics of our tourism promotion area. So a TPA is a way to generate revenues for tourism promotion in our city. And here in King County, it requires two municipalities working together. We are excited to be moving forward with this work with our partner municipality in the city of Redmond. And in in January of this year, council approved an interlocal agreement with the city of Redmond, which helps form a lot of the basis for what we're talking about today. Part of that interlocal agreement, it calls for the the creation of an advisory board that can help to create annual budgets and strategic plans for use of TPA funds. And this presentation is mostly about that board. Before we get too much into the specifics of the board, just a quick reminder of how important tourism is to our economy. Overnight visitors to Bellevue spend about 2.4 to 2.2 times this amount of their stay, their hotel room stay in the economy. Last year, 1.8 million visitors to the city of Bellevue directly spent $500 million in our in our community, and they had knocked down economic impacts of $1.5 billion. It's a lot of money. Funds from the TPA in its first year are expected to create $3.5 million to help create more tourism promotion so that those funds can snowball in future years. To get those funds out into the community where they can make impacts, we need to establish the TPA Advisory Board. Included in your packet tonight is the full draft ordinance to establish that board and the corresponding fund. The proposed ordinance is consistent with state law with the interlocal agreement between Bellevue and Redmond and is in line with the petition submitted by our stakeholders. It uses existing best practices and is consistent with code governing other Bellevue boards and commissions. This ordinance will give ample guidance to the advisory board on the functioning of the board, including membership, term limits, powers and duties, and limitations so that board members can hit the ground running once they are appointed. It also outlines how to conduct their business of the board in a consistent way as they prepare to advise council. Some key points of the ordinance include that board membership will be comprised of representatives of eligible ratepayers and equal membership from the Bellevue and Redmond zones. As currently written, members can have a maximum of two consecutive terms at four years per term. This is similar to other boards, but is at the discretion of council. Appointments to the advisory board will be made by the city manager. And once established, the advisory board will make recommendations for future appointments. The advisory board will meet at least quarterly, and with those meetings being open to the public, and they will adopt bylaws and procedures consistent with city code. Staff support for the advisory board will come from the Community Development Department. In terms of deliverables, the advisory board will present to Bellevue City Council as legislative authority for the TPA a recommended budget and strategic plan for TPA funds by July 30th of each year. That'll keep our, the TPA recommendations in line with our current budgeting processes. It should be noted that there is an exception for the first year where we expect a 16-month plan by the end of 2023, which would cover '23 and '24 as we ramp up the partial year of the TPA. The advisory board will review and recommend proposals for management agreements with tourism destination marketing organizations, public entities, or other similar organizations to provide for the day-to-day management and operation of the TPA. And the advisory board will also provide an annual report to the, to our partner municipality of the city of Redmond. Next steps, if directed, staff will return for adoption on May 22nd, 2023 with this ordinance. After that, we will see a contract from, actually, probably right after that, we'll see a contract for Department of Revenue for fund collection. And then we'll have appointments to the board, and we appointments to the board, and we are on track for fund collection beginning July 1. You can see those dates here in another way. Thank you so much. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you. Deputy Mayor, you're the liaison to the Maidenbauer Convention Center, correct?
Correct.
All right. Let me start with you.
Great presentation. Thanks so much. No questions. I'm ready to move this forward. But really appreciate all the hard work you've done to bring it to this point. I can't wait to start collecting those dues in, in July. And I know that this will be a great group that will really drive further tourism in this region. So again, thank you so much for all the effort and the due diligence on this and for moving this forward so quickly. Thank you.
I'm just curious if you could give me a case example of what this entity, how it would behave differently for when we are attract, trying to attract a large event like the Rock and Roll Marathon or something like that, having this tourism board in action, how, how would the experience be different for the city?
So the tourism board would give us an annual budget and a strategic plan. But the day to day administration will be contracted out to a destination marketing organization, most likely Visit Bellevue or One Redmond. Other organizations could apply as well. So the day to day would probably still be our destination marketing organizations going out and doing that cultivation and that handling, that recruitment. The board does give us a place as a city to help put into big buckets how we want that tourism promotion to be spent, if that helps.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I'd like to follow up with the mayor's question for you. I believe that it will generate, you know, more business, better economy. But how do we measure how much is generated separately from what mayor just referring to, you know, the expected normal activities such as the, you know, marathon and other nominal events, so that we know how, you know, the spa day would be adding, you know, to the economy?
That's actually a really good question. I think that's a good drill down. There's incredible data that we keep through Visit Bellevue on weekly occupancy rates, nightly stay rate, or nightly, the rates that it costs to stay in our hotel rooms, how much capacity we're actually filling. So we have X number of hotel rooms, some weekends we're filling 60% of those hotel rooms, some weekends we're spending or filling 30%. So there's a gap in how much capacity have and how much we're filling. We'll be able to see as this program grows through what the difference in that fill rate of our rooms is.
Very good. Yeah, I support this program. But this might be a consideration when you start, you know, moving forward, that you can differentiate at least as best as you can, you know, the additional help, additional effect, you know, based on what you do. I think we better to keep track and keep everybody motivated. Say, hey, we all got to be doing better. So I support this if, you know, yeah, thank you. If you need a motion.
Not yet. We'll get there. Councilmember Barxdale.
Thank you, Mayor. I support this. One question on appointments. Is there any criteria currently, like that we're using to determine appointments?
Yes. So appointees to the advisory board will have to be from eligible ratepayers. So the hotel owners, general managers, operational managers of that like.
Okay. And, excuse me, any sort of, in terms of like representation, from a diversity perspective, are we also looking at ways to promote that?
It's a requirement in the interlocal agreement that the representatives have to be from equal numbers of the two zones. So the Bellevue zone and the Redmond zone, there's a fairly limited pool because they have to be in those jobs. It's a good question, though.
I would add, Councilmember Barxdale, that the current makeup of the general managers and the operations leads at the different hotels do represent a nice diversity. It's actually, we've seen the, the folks in those roles diversify significantly over the last, the last five or six years. So that may occur naturally, and we can always look at ways to encourage board development.
And then also, last question in terms of size, so imagine a mix of larger and smaller organizations?
Yeah. Yeah. Any organization, or I'm sorry, any hotel with over 40 rooms would be eligible.
Okay. Cool. That would just, I guess, my, my reason for those questions, I would love to just encourage the diversity of representation on the boards, on the board. Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I think it's a very great idea, and I would be willing to devote tonight. I think one of the things that Councilmember Lee mentioned, I think is a good question on that. And I think my answer, and just want to see if this is on track, is having a board like this and putting it together with people from different aspects of the community of, you know, the, of the groups that would be coming here and people who know how to handle these things unless their job is supposed to having city staff and people coming in from time to time, working on it. Same thing with, with the Human Services Commission. We don't have the human services people coming in and making, you know, doing that work. We have, we have a committee. And same thing with a lot of things we do. So it's, it's that getting more expertise, getting more depth, getting more, just upping the game on it. And then the staff can be much more, probably more effective in it working with that. So it gives you a lot more information and how to do it. So I think that's the answer. And I think that, you know, my colleague was thinking about that. How does it, how does this really raise the bar on this thing? So I think it sounds like, from what I've read, it's really a great team you've put together and a good way to move this. And I'm looking forward to it. And we're on this, coming out of this pandemic and things are changing. I think we're on the, on the upward slope on that. And having this in place now is much better than having it in place sometime later. So sooner we can get going on, I think the better.
Thank you. Councilmember Robertson.
Yeah, just a couple of questions, or maybe one comment, one question. I see that the terms on the, first of all, I support this. I like Councilmember Stokes would be happy to pass this tonight. I know it's going to come back. I'm happy for it to come back on consent. I've read everything. So, and it all looks good. One thing that I had a question on the initial appointments of the advisory board, I know the terms need to be staggered so that they don't all go off at once. But when you first set up a board, usually some have to be two years, some have to be four years. I didn't see that in the ordinance. So how are we going to do that so that we, if they're meant to be staggered, we need to start, begin as you'd like to go on, right? So how are we going to do that? It's not in the ordinance.
That's a good question. It might be something we might want to add to the ordinance. I know that it has been part of our conversation around staggering so that those term limits would roll off naturally. We'll take a look at that and see how that is reflected in other ordinance.
Yeah, you can either start like the, start some six year terms or start some two year terms, but you'd have to have different terms. Now, it might happen naturally, but if we want to stagger them. Anyway, that's just a comment. That's just the only thing I saw that wasn't addressed. And then Jesse, since I know you were in the room when I commented about how we need to let our, our businesses know about the Keep Bellevue Beautiful, it seems like there would be a really nice dovetail between this and our Visit Bellevue and making sure that the city is clean and beautiful. So we need to make sure that we cross market within our different organizations once this one's set up. Just a comment.
We will let everybody know.
The hotels might want to adopt some streets. Thanks.
Councilmember Sun.
Yes, thank you. I'm excited about this one as well. Maybe a happy dance for this one, too. I was just thinking, so I'm ready to vote because I think when I was on the Bellevue Convention Center Authority back in 2020, we were working on this and thinking that it was going to roll out soon. And so I'm just really excited to see this going. I have one that I'd like to get a reminder of, which is, I know you talked about the year to date economic impact of the 1.8 million tourists. So in terms of the recovery of the tourism industry, what can we expect? And, and where are we in terms of the recovery? I was paying a lot more attention when I was the liaison. So wondered if you could remind me of that, how far back we're in the recovery. And then on the strategic plan by July 30th, I, I just wanted to understand. So is the strategic plan then the Destination Development Plan final report from 2017? Because we're not going to have our advisory, you know, council or board on board yet until we start this rollout. So I just wanted to understand what that looks like. And then I also just wanted to get a sense for, since this is based on room nights, and we were, I remember at the time, Brad, that we were talking about the fact that a lot of the vacancies came from actually weekends. And so how we actually build more tourism. So I just wondered if we could get a little bit more of a reminder on that. And I'm excited about the collection beginning July 1. Thank you.
So I'll start with the weekend nights. It's one of the key things that a TPA can really help us with. Currently in Bellevue, our hotels are fuller during the week with our corporate clients, and they go down, our occupancy goes down at the weekend. But a lot of TPA funds can be used on arts and culture events. They can be used on community, things that draw folks for that leisure travel or encourage folks to stay, lengthen their corporate stay to get that leisure travel. So this is one of those places where we're really looking to funnel money into weekends, shoulder seasons. Visit Bellevue has set up a really lovely event incubation program right now. So some of our current organizations, I know Tazvira, South Asian Film Festival, they are looking to build a film summit this fall, right in our shoulder season of October, where they would have an extended stay, they'd have more hotel rooms, and that type of thing where we can now have a, a pool of funds to help encourage them and get that stuff done. That's exactly what we're looking for. For the 1.4 million visitors, that is a 2022 number. So that was all of 2022. And then, I think you had a question around the Destination Development Plan, and that is something that is in the process of starting to get updated. So we're going to see a new Destination Development Plan here in a couple of years.
Okay, that would be great. Because I noticed the, the current one still talks about expansion of Maidenbauer and developing a headquarters hotel. And not quite sure with the current economic climate, whether that's going to be much more of a slow walk and so better understanding how we really target the, the post COVID tourism and, and convention space. My question on the tourism was the, the 1.8 million, is that what we're expecting in the recovery? Or are we still like 90% in recovery? Or what was, what's that?
Thank you for rephrasing. So we're doing quite well in terms of recovery on our hotel rooms. We're not quite at 2029 numbers, but, or 2019 numbers, but really, really close. This is a place where Brad has a really lovely like COVID recovery dashboard. It's got like red lights and green lights and yellow lights. And we're almost entirely on our green lights. So we're feeling very confident here.
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Okay, great. So did you want to say anything, Jesse?
No, I think we've covered it really well.
Okay. Thank you, Lori. So I want to just know with a head nod, do people feel comfortable bringing this back under consent? Okay. Do you want to go ahead and make a motion, Deputy Mayor?
I move to direct staff to return with an ordinance to establish an advisory board and adopt two chapters to the Bellevue City Code relating to the TPA's administration to be put on the consent agenda at a future meeting.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. That passes. So that is the last item in our meeting. We are going to move into executive session. We will take a break and start that at 10 till. And then we will adjourn this meeting after that. But for the public, this is the end of the meeting. Thank you.